Let's turn it on. I call the 2,423rd meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 in city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you're here in City Hall and are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comic card on the table back there. For those at City Hall, or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may also be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia Et Cetera Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. Next, we have our announcements, and I got a request. Yeah, so up there is Purple Up. Okay, it's in there. I got a request from some people in the community to include that in the announcements. Join the Milwaukee community in remembering the members of the armed forces from Clackamas County who made the ultimate sacrifice during the Vietnam War. On Saturday, April 5th at 1:00 PM, the American Legion Post 180, the Susanna Lee Barlow Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and the city will gather with community members and veterans groups at Scott Park to remember those named on the Vietnam Veterans Monument. Parking is available at the LeDding Library and the public parking lot west of Scott Park, which can be accessed from Main Street across from City Hall. Wear purple on Thursday, April 10th for Oregon Purple Up for Military Kids. Purple symbolizes all branches of the military. Purple Up acts as a visible way to show support and thank military youth for their strength and sacrifices. Join an event on February, I'm sorry, on Friday, April 11th at 2:00 PM at the LeDding Library to create your own worm bin. Worms love food waste, so feed them yours and keep it out of the trash. The event will be led by Rick Reynolds, educator and local author. Celebrate the LeDding Library's Spice Club this month by learning about Korean cooking and culture alongside social media star Sarah On and her mom, co-authors of Uma: A Korean Mom's Kitchen Wisdom, and 100 Family Recipes. The talk will be held at the library on Saturday, April 12th at 12:00 PM. Sarah On is social media manager for America's Test Kitchen and the creator of the Honest Kitchen website. Okay, cool. Drop into the LeDding Library on Monday, April 14th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM to decorate your own bee, butterfly, or hummingbird wings. The event is meant for all ages and will be held in the library community room. This is a great opportunity to create wings for the city's Earth Day event on April 26th. And speaking of Earth Day, the city, in partnership with the Historic Milwaukee Neighborhood District Association and other community partners, is hosting a volunteer event on Saturday, April 26th from 9:30 AM to 12:30 PM. Volunteers will choose from three focus areas, including pollinator pathway, native plant maintenance, trash pickup, and invasive plant removal. The event will include an opportunity to create and show off pollinator wings in celebration of Milwaukee's designation as a Bee City USA. Numerous organizations will be in attendance with information about native plants, pollinators, and much more. Volunteers will gather at the South Downtown Plaza next to Dogwood Park at 9:30 AM to get started. Learn more and register to volunteer on the city's website. I also want to call out, Saturday, April 12th is the next work party in Minthorne Springs Wetland. We are the Milwaukee Parks Foundation and the Wetlands Conservancy, who are the managers of the property, work there on the second Saturday of every month. And come out and help us remove some invasive plants in the wetland so that the native plants we've put in there will thrive. That is from 9:30, yeah, 9:30 AM to noon. You can just park near Planet Fitness and walk across 37th Avenue to the entrance to Minthorne Wetlands. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at MilwaukeeOregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. And I will note, there's a big event happening on Monday, which is not, didn't make our slide, but I think a lot of people in the community are aware of it, which is the opening of Frame Brewery in the historic City Hall. It's looking beautiful, so I definitely encourage everyone to get there and check it out next week. All right, haiku. So every, every meeting, we have haiku. We actually have two today. I thought, oh, well, we could do two today because we are doing National Poetry Month. I know people are here to present on that. So we have kind of a funny haiku, or moderately comical haiku for April Fool's Day. Did you miss today's Main Street Running of the Bulls? April Foolery. And then we have a more serious haiku submitted by one of our neighborhood chairs, Debbie Lipton. Despite my worries, lilacs still bloom in my yard. Precious reminders. So thanks to Debbie for submitting that. And since we do have Tom from our poetry series here, I do want to tell you, Tom, I'm always looking for haiku, so you can help me recruit some haiku writers. Okay. With that, we will go to the proclamations, and we start with child, we have four proclamations today, and we're going to start with Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so I'll ask Captain Cheragino and Laura Sisalak from the Clackamas Children's Center.
Counsel, Mayor Beatty, thanks for having us. It's been a year since last year we did this similar event, or to proclaim April's Child Abuse Prevention Month. April is also my work anniversary, not here with the city of Milwaukee, but as a full-time law enforcement officer. And so I hit 28 years full-time, and 15 of those years I spent investigations, and I worked very closely with the Children's Center in Oregon City over those times doing child abuse investigations. And the amount of families that they reach out and help, I can't even explain. Words cannot put into the influence and the effect that the Children's Center does, not only help law enforcement, but to help these families who are usually in really tough, stressful situations when they are seen by the Children's Center. So with that, I'll introduce Laura, who is the Director of Prevention and Community Engagement at the Children's Center, and I'll let her take it away from here.
Thank you. Hi, folks, it's a pleasure to be back this year again. Really appreciate the invitation to be here and to recognize the role we play in child abuse prevention. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about the children's overall degree and talk a little bit about events that pass around a little more. The best number to go to the event.
Oh, I'm not on. Thank you. That helps. So the mission of Children's Center is to work with the community to end child abuse and neglect through assessment, treatment, and prevention. We are working to build a world where all children feel safe, valued, and heard. Child advocacy centers have been around for a couple of decades, and Children's Center is the only child advocacy center serving Clackamas County. We serve all of Clackamas County and only Clackamas County. Before child advocacy centers began, there was really kind of a chaotic situation where when there was a concern of abuse and neglect and investigations around that, it was very haphazard. And so law enforcement, child welfare, the medical community were all working independently in silos to ascertain what had happened in a suspected case of abuse and neglect. So the Children's Center's been around for about 20 years, and we were really established to bring a trauma-centered, trauma-informed approach to those investigations and to ascertaining what's happened when there's a concern. So children are brought to the Child Advocacy Center and our partners, including law enforcement, including child welfare, the district attorney's office, they come to the Children's Center to hear a child tell their story, and ideally to only have to tell that story once. So we're trying to avoid the re-traumatization of repeating those stories over and over. There are about 24 child advocacy centers throughout the state of Oregon, and they all really have that core of those assessments at our mission. We serve this year well over 500 children with assessment services. That's a full medical and forensic interview assessment. We also are really fortunate to have a very skilled therapy team that can support these children and families after their investigation. And then we have a robust prevention department, which of course we're excited to share a little bit more about during Prevention Month. You can see, we are really seeing the tip of the iceberg and kind of the most severe concerns of abuse and neglect. Those are the ones that are elevated to be seen by Children's Centers. So while the general incidence is not as high as half of sexual abuse victims, that is who we see predominantly, including physical abuse, neglect, and emotional abuse. These numbers exceed 100% because in many cases, there are multiple reasons for referral. You can see our age and gender distribution there as well.
So these statistics at the top are per year?
These are each year. Exactly. Again, of those seen at the Children's Center. And so we obviously are only seeing a fraction of those kids who might be experiencing abuse and neglect. Child welfare in Clackamas County receives, I believe, over 3,000 cases a year, and it's estimated that anywhere between 1 in 10 and 1 in 7 children experience abuse and neglect during their lifetime. Anyone can refer to the Children's Center, but really we're working most closely with our law enforcement partners and folks in child welfare for kids to come see us. We primarily see kids under the age of 18, but we will occasionally interview and examine young adult with developmental disabilities. So anybody can call or email the Children's Center with a concern. Of course, if that needs to be cross-reported to child welfare, we will do so immediately. But families can even call with concerns or questions and to get support and help. We operate Monday through Friday. We always have to have urgent appointments. In the case of physical abuse cases, we have to see them within no later than 48 hours. And so we always have those urgent appointments, and our medical providers are also available after hours. I think, Mayor Beatty, that you had requested some information about reporting, which is critical, and I thank you for requesting that information. So of course, if anyone suspects a case of abuse or neglect, they should be calling the Department of Human Services hotline directly. And there's information here about that screeners will talk through. Those can be anonymous reports. And so there's information about how to call ODHS. In addition, and/or even simultaneously, people are welcome to call the Children's Center with a case. Or if you're not sure, you can start with the Children's Center. Again, we're going to cross-report if need be. But we also provide a lot of family support and referrals. If a family, maybe there does not need to be a report of abuse made, but the family needs some other kind of support, we can absolutely help refer and get families connected to services if needed. So that's the really heavy message around kind of the core of the work that we do. But again, this is Abuse Prevention Month, and I think a lot of folks don't really think about prevention when they think about abuse and neglect. But the good news is that a lot of abuse and neglect is preventable. And so we take the month of April to really promote community-building events, events that promote healthy, safe families, that promote education in the community for adults and professionals about how to keep kids safe, how to be aware and educated about the signs of abuse and neglect, really with an intention of prevention. So I have passed, in a different form, I passed around some of our key events that are happening throughout the county. And this Thursday, I wanted to really highlight, we're having an open house at Children's Center. We would love to see some of you there. It's from 8:00 to 9:30 Thursday morning, and we'll be sharing a little bit more about the work that we do. We'll give tours of our facilities and talk a little bit more about the great work we're doing in prevention. So essentially, our message is today, and what I thank you for giving us some time to share, is really just that abuse and neglect are preventable. If adults step up, they become educated advocates and make a commitment to protecting kids and to making reports when they need to, and supporting families to be healthy and resilient. So want to appreciate your time and your interest in the topic and for recognizing Prevention Month with the proclamation.
Thank you. Captain, any further words?
I do not. All yours.
Okay. Well, then I will read the proclamation. And for the others out here for proclamations, you are welcome to read them yourselves as well. But in this, I'll go ahead and read this one. Whereas child abuse is a tragedy that impacts the well-being of all, and whereas child abuse prevention programs require strong community partnerships, and whereas child abuse prevention requires a public commitment to create safe and nurturing environments for parents and guardians to raise their children, and whereas this community recognizes that children are our most valuable and vulnerable resources and are key to our prosperity and quality of life. And whereas by providing a healthy environment for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can help ensure that Milwaukee's children will grow to their full potential. Now therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Milwaukee and call upon all residents of this community to work to prevent child abuse. Thank you. Thanks for coming. And our next proclamation is for the aforementioned National Poetry Month. So I invite up our library director, Brent Husher, and Tom Hogan, who has led the Milwaukee Poetry Series for many years.
Thank you so much for letting us come and speak with you today. Tom, I'll turn you on in just a moment. I just want to thank you to Tom Hogan, who has given many years of service to this community in a number of ways. But Poetry Series would not be here today without the work he and his team puts on, puts forward, and I really appreciate the work he does. So I'm going to turn it back over to Tom.
Thank you, Brent, and Mayor, Counsel. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here. We've been very excited about April being proclaimed as National Poetry Month. So thank you very much for that. We've been here 18 years, as Brent said, and thank you for the support that you have given, really through all of that time. I say regularly that it takes a group of people to work on things, and it takes a community to do that, and so that's what we need. We're celebrating National Poetry Month with two events. Tomorrow night, we have our spring reading at the LeDding Library, and this features three featured readers plus an open mic. So anyone who wants to read a poem can do that and come in and participate. So anyone who wants to read a poem can do that and come in and participate. A week after that, on the 9th, Michael McDowell, who is going to be our April poet, he is going to be reading, and also at the library. Another thing we do is that we partner with St. John the Evangelist for our first Friday event. And I mention that because we want to include community groups in that. So the September event is going to focus on community leaders. So we'd like to invite you to come and be our featured readers. The event is going to be here downstairs in the community room at City Hall. So we're very happy about being able to do that. So I'm just hoping that that is going to work out and there'll be more information about that as we get closer to the event. I do have some flyers, and so I'd like to leave them here after we finish presenting and so that they can be passed around. And it seems very much in keeping with this being National Poetry Month for me to read a poem. And I've selected a short one, and I think this is pertinent for the next presentation too, that we're going to hear about the library. This is "An Afternoon in the Stacks," a poem by William Stafford, who was taught at Lewis and Clark for many years. He was also the Oregon Poet Laureate, 1975 to 1990, 15 years. And I can also say that my very first job back in high school was at the library in Maluma County. So we worked in the stacks all the time. And this is "An Afternoon in the Stacks." Closing the book, I find I have left my head inside. It is dark in here, but the chapters open their beautiful spaces and give a rustling sound, words adjusting themselves to their meaning. Long passages open successive pages, an echo continuous from the title onward hums behind me. From in here, the world looms a jungle redeemed by these linked sentences carved out by an author and a traveler and a reader kept the way open. When this book ends, I will pull it inside out like a sock and throw it back in the library. But the rumor of it will haunt all that follows in my life. A candle flame in Tibet leans when I move. A candle flame in Tibet leans when I move. "Afternoon in the Stacks" by William Stafford. Thank you very much to the council for proclaiming April as National Poetry Month and for the opportunity for Brent and I to come and share with you. We know that poetry connects us, so we're very happy about that. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lovely poem. I know you guys often celebrate William Stafford's birthday too with a reading.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah. The second Saturday, second Saturday in January.
Second Saturday in January.
So we plan to do that again.
Okay. Do one of you want to read this? Do one of you want to read the proclamation or should I do that?
You want to?
Would you like me to read it? Sure, I'll read it.
I can, are you going to read the next?
Yeah, go.
Okay. Whereas the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996, and whereas the Milwaukee Poetry Series has made poetry more accessible to our community since 2007, and whereas National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, introduce Americans to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bringing poets and poetry to the public in immediate and innovative ways, make poetry an important part of our children's education, and whereas poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans, and whereas poetry as an essential part of the arts and humanities affects every aspect of life in America today, including education, the economy, and community pride and development, and whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. And now therefore I... You get to read, you get to read that part.
Now therefore I, Lisa Beatty, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 1st through April 30th as National Poetry Month, and I call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all the people of Milwaukee to observe this month to celebrate the cultural riches our community has to offer and to recognize the important role poetry plays in creating and sustaining this great nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Thank you very much. And then Brent is going to stay up there because although poetry gets a month, the library only gets a week. I don't know why that is, but it's also National Library Week that we'll be recognizing.
Thank you so much for letting me stay in the hot seat. I can't wait to read this proclamation because you know I love the wherases. So it is just a week and I'm happy to review sort of the days that are going on. But as I look at, I think about all the work that our library staff completes, all the interactions and all the great things that is happening in our library. I'm just proud of the work we do and I think our community should be very proud of what's happening there. We're connecting people in those traditional ways that we think of libraries, connecting kids to learning and literacy, folks of all age, stories and knowledge, and then folks who need other kinds of resources, connecting them with folks who can help in other ways, with housing, with food insecurity, and those sorts of things. So it's a good gig, good library, and awesome community to be in. So it is National Library Week and what does that mean? Why is everyone going to the library? Millions of people every week, not to ours, 650 people a day though. What's the draw? The answer is everything according to my sheet here. And just for fun, if you want to go celebrate, there are actual days that you can go celebrate during National Library Week. Monday, April 7th is the Right to Read Day. That's the day for readers, advocates, and library lovers to take action to protect the libraries. April 8th is National Library Workers' Day, where you can go celebrate your favorite library workers. I'll be around. Feel free to come by and celebrate. Me? I mean, my team. Sorry. It's a long day. April 9th is National Library Outreach Day. This is really that day to celebrate our library teams that go out into the communities where people are and serve them there. I always like to take a moment to say outreach in the library really is delivering services outside of the building, talking about what we do, bringing things out. Sometimes outreach becomes shorthand for, I'm not really talking about the layer of service and complexity that can be involved with that. So it's an important part of what we do. And then finally, Thursday, the 10th, is Take Action for Libraries Day, which is a day just to rally advocates for supportive libraries, which are sometimes under threat by many, many different people and forces. So anyway, thank you for that. And that's what I have to say. Oh, thank you, Mayor, for highlighting all the programs and things that we are doing. And you mentioned the Author Talk, and today is the newest, first day of our Spice Club Second Spice, which is Korean bogogi. So stop by the library, get your spice kits, test out a couple of new recipes, and then come see some cookbook author mom and daughter coming to talk on Saturday the 12th. So, there you go. I would love to read it. Let's see how I can do. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and love of learning that lasts a lifetime. And whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, lifelong learning, dedicated while, excuse me, dedicated while librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. This is fun. And whereas libraries provide free and fair access to books, tools, and programming, ensuring all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive, as well as protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expanding access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. Libraries also empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week under the theme "Drawn to the Library."
Now therefore I, Lisa Beatty, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 6th to 12th, 2025 to be National Library Week in Milwaukee, and I encourage all residents to visit their library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And our final proclamation for today is for our Vietnam War Remembrance Day, as was noted in the announcements. We have, we have a ceremony coming up on Saturday afternoon at our memorial next to the Letting Library. And I was going to say, we have somebody who's, we have Phyllis, because I recognized Phyllis from before, so we don't have Nancy McCrery. We have Phyllis from the Daughters of the American Revolution and Chad Darrington with the American Legion Post 180 and our own recorder, Scott Stauffer.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty and Council, for taking the moment to recognize this proclamation. As has been announced at least once, maybe twice already, we have an event coming up this weekend, this Saturday. We hope to see Council and the members of the community there. The city has had the great fortune over the last 12 or 13 years to partner with two really great community partners, American Legion Post 180, the largest American Legion Post in the state of Oregon, if I'm correct, one of the largest, and then the Susanna Lee Barlow Chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution, have been great partners in the city's efforts to hold up and recognize and thank those who served our country in the armed forces, primarily for much of the last 13 years through the Vietnam War 50th Commemoration Program, which was a Department of Defense-sponsored commemoration that just is ending this year with the conclusion of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. So I will turn it over to Chad and Phyllis to say a few words, and then I don't know if one of you want to read the proclamation or have Mayor Beatty do it. But thank you both for being here and thank you both, the organizations, for your service to our community and our country.
Good evening. The Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit patriotic service organization. Our missions are education, historic preservation, and patriotism. My chapter, the Susanna Lee Barlow Chapter, has been grateful for the years of partnership with the City of Milwaukee and the American Legion Post 180. The work and service we have done together has been extremely meaningful to our chapter members and families. Each year on March 29th, we place flowers on graves of some of the fallen from our area. These young men are not forgotten. Also, very meaningful to our members is the opportunity to recognize, thank, and welcome home the Vietnam War veterans who are able to return. We have over 80, we have given out over 80 commemorative pins to veterans from our chapter. As we have, we have witnessed healing among veterans and their families. We have deepened our appreciation of their sacrifices. Thank you for the proclamation today and for a chance to participate in the Vietnam War Remembrance Day. Thank you.
I'm new at this. This is my first time. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Chad Darrington. I am the adjutant for Milwaukee Post 180 here. The Post has served the veterans of the Milwaukee community and the community at large for generations now. We're proud to say that the Post is the most active it has been in years and with our current membership right at the very top of all of the posts in the state of Oregon for membership. We are doing meals, music, food boxes for veterans with, partnering with Amin to do food boxes for veterans, and bringing live music to play at the Post for our members and for the public, since we're doing it with meals. And we are honored to support the Milwaukee Vietnam Veterans Memorial and to take part in the remembrance on Saturday alongside with city and the Daughters of the Revolution. Looking ahead, I also invite you to come join us on Flag Day, June 14th, when we will do a flag retirement ceremony with the local scout troops in our parking lot to properly dispose of the American flags. And if you haven't come by the Post recently, please do. We have a website that lists when we're having meals and music, like Sunday breakfast almost every Sunday. We're trying to get back to that every Sunday, and bands like Big Yellow Taxi and The Roadless Travelers that will be playing at the Post. I also would invite Counselor Robert and Counselor Adam to stop by and pick up your membership cards. You know, I don't think I see you in our membership roster database. Oh, good. I'm actually doing my job. Once again, thank you very much for the time to speak and for this proclamation and your support of veterans organizations in the area.
Thank you. Do one of you want to read it? You do not have to. It's no pressure.
Whereas the people of Milwaukee and the United States wish to honor the service and sacrifice of American military personnel and their families who served during the Vietnam War, and whereas the United States and the state of Oregon have proclaimed Welcome Home Veteran, Vietnam Veterans Day at the end of March each year to coincide with the anniversary of the last day of combat operations in Vietnam, and whereas to better serve our veteran neighbors, the Milwaukee Police Department, Milwaukee American Legion Post 180, and veteran service organizations in the greater Milwaukee community establish the Corporal DIFI Fund to provide immediate interim support to veterans in need while other services are sought, and whereas the City of Milwaukee and its community partners, American Legion Post 180 and the Susanna Lee Barlow Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, are committed to honoring Vietnam veterans and their families and will mark the 50th anniversary of the end of the war with an event at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at South Park at 1 o'clock PM on Saturday, April 5th, 2025. And whereas it is the right, it is right to reflect on the service and sacrifice made by all those who served our nation in the Vietnam and Southeast Asia Theater during the Vietnam War.
Now therefore I, Lisa Beatty, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 2025 to be Vietnam War Remembrance Day in the City of Milwaukee, and do encourage all community members to visit the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at Scott Park and attend the April 5th, 2025 commemoration event. Thank you, guys. And I do want to put in a plug for the Corporal DIFI Fund. It's a really good cause. Anybody who would like to make a contribution, I think you can stop by the Legion most any time and drop off a check. It goes, what it does is, it was created by some members of the Legion and some of our police officers who realized there were veterans who were maybe going to be eligible for VA benefits, but there's a gap in time between when they are found and when they apply and when they actually receive those benefits. So the Corporal DIFI Fund is about helping people fill that gap before their benefits come through. So it's a great cause. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to community comments, and I have one, but I think I have some more coming. Okay. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community member comments on city business that is not on the agenda. Before we begin, is there follow-up from the March 18th comments, Ms. Sager?
There is a little, Mayor. At our last meeting, Greg Heimer and Pam Husbands were here to testify about a... At our last meeting, Greg Heimer and Pam Husbands were here to testify about a proposal out of the Lynwood NDA to build a covered picnic shelter at Fernburg Park. At that time, I shared that we were slated to have a meeting with NCPRD staff, at which we would discuss kind of process for requests by that. That meeting has been rescheduled to early May, so I don't have an update specifically on the process piece and the appropriate contact at NCPRD, but I do want to ensure Greg and Pam that we're working internally on that process, communicating to them and to other community members sort of how we will field amenity requests like this. I do think Greg and Pam were sort of wanting to get a sense from the Council if there was general support and green light to kind of for them to proceed with some fundraising efforts. I think from the staff side, we've been engaged and we are supportive of the project, but I will leave sort of anything more formal to you all in terms of giving kind of a green light. But I do know Greg reached out again today saying he was expecting to hear something from the Council tonight on that project.
Okay, thank you for that. Maybe we can discuss that in Council reports at the end of the meeting. I know they are kind of looking for a letter from us. They also asked the PARB to do a letter for them. I'm not quite sure I understand why they feel the need for letters, but it may be something we're willing to do, a simple expression of support for their efforts. Anyway, we can discuss that in Council reports at the end of the evening. So I'm gonna go ahead. I do have several people who want to comment, so I'm gonna read the rest of my script. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card found on the table at the back of chambers. If you are on Zoom, use the raise hand reaction to alert staff that you wish to speak, and when instructed to, click the microphone button to unmute yourself. If you are telephoning in through Zoom and would like to make a comment, dial *9 to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your comment information to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. As Council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, this is not the time for discussion. The city manager will respond at the next meeting to comments that require follow-up. So my first commenter is Rod Smith.
Hello, everyone. It's Rod again. I know I haven't spoken with you guys in about a month. It's because I have decided to punch up instead of just staying within my boundaries. I had the opportunity to speak with you, Mayor, and Joseph, that's not present, about the pit stop that had an issue. I submitted an ordinance to the City of Milwaukee, perhaps if you had the opportunity to look at it, that could, perhaps you can cannibalize it and do something interesting with it. I'm not that filled with hubris that think I'm the most intelligent man in the room, even with my children being the only ones. That being said, I decided to take a step farther and sent a proposed bill to the legislation of Oregon, Salem, and spoke with Senator Taylor over email a few times. We built a rapport, and she invited me down on the 26th of last month to have a conversation. I invited Kerry, the owner of Pit Stop, and Adam Hill, if he would like to do a Thelma and Louise kind of trip down to Salem, since I was out of my depth. Once we received this invitation, I tried my best to engage with the senator on my idea and again offered the fact that I would find if they wanted to cannibalize my idea and make something better of it, but I got good feedback. The bill is a small business bill exceeding the amount of time that they actually give us. Only 30 days of a business is going to be evicted. I proposed that we increase it to 90 days, giving the opportunity for these small businesses to move the materials around and prepare themselves for the inevitable closing of the community or business. And that was it, basic. They could do what they wished with it. We had good feedback, and the reason I said I punched up is because I know that the ordinance is actually going to be on the table sometime in the next couple months. And again, I would love to express my undying support for this idea. It is something that is missing from the City of Milwaukee and missing in a lot of other states, not from California or Washington. These two ordinance actually exist in some form. Merely leaving us out in the center of these two states makes us feel less than what they are. I suggest we fix that, heal with the grassroots. Groups that I have engaged with, we got a lot of support. I want this something. Oh, thank you very much, and I'll just finish it up with, thank you, Adam, for the trip and not using profanity when you almost hit that guy.
Oh, my.
He's lying. I always use profanity.
Was he Thelma or Louise? Just wanted to make.
I am Louise. I'm Louise.
And I'm glad you chose the alternate ending.
Well, thank you, Rod, and I believe at our next meeting, Emma will be gone and Joseph will be sitting up here, so Joseph can answer us the latest on.
Oh, no, you'll get me back on the 15th.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
I'll be jet lagged, but I'll be here.
Okay. All right. Then I, I'm gonna call on Nicole Madigan, one of our staff members who wanted to make a public comment.
Oh, very. I have some wild things to say tonight. Well, good evening, members of Council, Mayor Beatty. I am Nicole Madigan, Deputy City Recorder for the City of Milwaukee, current resident of unincorporated Clackamas County Oak Grove, but former resident of Milwaukee, graduate of Milwaukee High School, and former student of Milwaukee Middle School. I say all of that to let you know that even though I may not currently reside in the city limits, this community means just as much to me as it does to all of you. Tonight, I wanted to take a moment to share something that I've been saying to my teammates and members of your management team, which is how incredibly grateful I am to work for a city where Council's values not only align with my own, but where those values are held firm, unwavering, and uncompromised. Just recently, I had a conversation with a member of the public who asked if we were cutting the Equity Steering Committee. They'd received the Boards and Committee flyer, and they had questions, and I thought they were asking out of concern that it was going to be cut, but that was not the case. In that moment, I was proud to be able to say, no, this Council has remained steadfast in its commitment to equity, to ensuring that the work continues, not just as a statement, but as an action. That commitment is not always easy, and as we have seen with other organizations cutting their programs, but it is necessary, as it is one of the many reasons, and is one of what, and it is one of the many reasons why I believe in the work happening in this city. And it's not just about equity, it's the heart that goes into everything that we do, the partnerships to support our unhoused neighbors with dignity and care, the sustainability work that forges on, the commitment to making Milwaukee a place where everyone can thrive. You're proving every day that this city doesn't just talk about its values, it lives them. And as a government employee in these uncertain times, that means everything. Every day when I show up to serve this city, I know that the work I do, no matter how small, is contributing to something greater. I know that I am part of a team, part of a city, sorry, part of a movement that's choosing hope over fear, progress over stagnation, and compassion over indifference. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for your leadership, your integrity, and for making it easy to be proud of the work we do here. Because of you, because of this city, I don't just feel like I'm showing up for a job. I feel like I'm showing up for a purpose. And then I just wanted to share something that Council President Anderson heard with Emma Segor that totally later the next week brightened my day and reminded me why we all do this work. Tonight is the last night for our Boards and Committees, and last Friday, we had a second grader come in, and she submitted an application to join either our Arts Committee or our Park and Rec Board. And it feels so appropriate for tonight and some of the topics that came up on our proclamations. She wants to help Milwaukee change for good. She loves Milwaukee, and she loves helping people. She likes the stores, the people and the neighbors. She likes the free library. She loves this city so much, so I just wanted to share that with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. That was... Okay. And then I have Ronell Coburn, and Chris Ordolano, and Brian Davies, and they're ceding their time to you. Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll give you 15 minutes.
Okay. I figured that's what it would end up being. All right, which glasses? It's good to see those of us we work together and all the years ago. It feels like a long time ago now because of the pandemic and all the middle housing adoption of the state codes, and it was a very arduous process that we all got through, and I'm glad to just see people in person again after all of that Zoom time, once the pandemic hit as well. Yeah, Scott gave you a couple replacement pages for your packet. Well, one's a replacement page for it's no material changes, just a little more labeling. I really had to cram to get stuff together by noon on Friday to make the packet, and then a second page, which is sort of an additional page, making a summary, a very tight summary of the points. I wish the rest of it could have been tighter. I just ran out of time. So we have a seven-unit, sorry, multiplex coming in on Southeast 29th on our Greenway, and the irony isn't lost on me that it's right across the street from me. Since I'm in the know about all the codes and things, I've sort of been bringing the neighbors along, so, you know, people, of course, are upset, but not always understanding that the codes are in place now, and there's sort of nothing to be fought over the off-street parking minimum being zero. But really, we are almost concerned in the most practical way with the fact that we have sort of a perfect test case, unimproved road. We're lucky that our main pavement was redone some years ago. It's made a real big difference to our street, but our parkways, what I call the parkways in the, is it row or row? Is it the row, the right-of-way, in terms of pronouncing the acronym? The row, I'm gonna just call the parking strip part of the row, the row, to make it easy here, because our right-of-ways go back into most of our yards as well. So we have got a lot of issues that are sort of perfect as a first test case. On my street, I brought a laser pointer. It's so crazy, because I need one set of glasses for one thing and one for another. Is the pointer? No. So I just wanted to do a really quick overview to sort of dial in on all the factors on this street that are in play. If you look kind of to the lower left, you'll see the grassy area where it says soil, grass over old gravel, and there's drain one and drain two adjacent to that. And also on the other end of the street, we've got areas that are soil and grass over old gravel there as well, which means that it was gravelled sometime a long time in the past, but the adobe's floated up, and there's literally three to four inches of dirt on top, plus the grass, meaning it's mud. A car drives over it, you get a six-inch rut. My frontage, which is the house on the bottom, the big, long one with the yellow car and the two walkways, my parkway, my row, was like that when I moved in nine years ago, and I had to have it excavated and re-rocked because as soon as we started to park on it in the winter, it was February when I got housemates, it literally turned into a stinking mud swamp. The grass was rotting, it held water, it was a mess, like within a month of starting to park on it. So that's what we'll be looking at with probably 14 cars coming on street. I've been monitoring the six-unit cluster on 40th near the water tower, which has six onsite spots 24 hours a day. There are five to eight additional cars parked out on the street, so there's easily two cars per unit, just a very practical, real number. So the cars are gonna come onto the street, they're gonna start parking in these areas that are muddy, and the drains there, drain one and two to the south. Drain one is still in pretty good shape. It's not really inundated. Drain two, I've got sort of Zoom-in pictures here. Drain two is a mess already, and it's very inundated because where it says downhill slope there in the middle of the road, the slope goes north downhill from there, that's sort of the crest, and it goes downhill to those drains, and then 29th coming from the south is also a downhill. So as soon as that grassy area starts to get parked on, not only will it turn into a swamp, the drains are gonna be inundated, and drain two already is in trouble regularly, as you can see from the picture the other day. There's rock washout, mud washout, and standing water. The parking areas across the street on the north side across from that area do have rock, but they're very uneven, they're very potholed. Street maintenance will come and re-gravel the first two feet off the pavement, but there's a lot of potholding, potholing, and water being held away from, you know, closer to the mailboxes and such, too. So that's sort of the first set of issues is when these areas start to get parked on, they're gonna just turn into a mess, and they're gonna wash out into the drains. We also have, to the right of the development, the house that's just to the north there has utility trailers permanently parked on the street, which is not disallowed by our code. It's a loophole that code has wanted to change for a long time, but just hasn't had the time, you know, the resource of time to do. And those block the sightlines. Once we get more cars, more traffic, more parking, there's sightline issues there. There's also sort of equity issues in terms of everybody else has parking in front of their house available for public use, but that house has none because some long time ago, the front yard was also gravelled there on the right where you see a utility trailer parked. That one's actually on the street now. That that's all gravelled and used as a driveway, their front yard used as a driveway. Then we've also got, so there's those issues, like the parking strip issues.
Yep, halfway through your.
Okay. It's so hard to get everything. This is just a quick picture of what the one across the street looks like right now. The next issue has to do with, as we spoke about years ago, blockages of mailboxes when we have drive-up service, as well as walkways. This is actually a shot of my mailbox and one of my two walkways. My walkways come directly off the street. Other neighbors have walkway access from their driveways, but my house wasn't made that way. I have a very strange house, actually. And the walkways come directly off the street. And we can't say walk through parked cars here across a flat lawn because I also happen to be on a pretty good slope where the house is sitting up higher. So if cars park in front of my walkways, we literally may not be able to get into our house. Also, there seems to be some, some issues around the parking because here in Milwaukee, code does not prohibit blockage of walkways or of mailboxes, yet the postal service requires 15 feet runway on either side, as per the little image here. I think this is stuff you guys are all familiar with. Or they can refuse to deliver the mail. And in fact, the postal carriers, carriers technically are prohibited from dismounting the truck without permission due to safety issues unless it's just a temporary blockage. So where I'm sitting, I'm kind of at a loss as to what to do about my, my walkways and my mailbox. I've re-gravelled my, my row early this year because after nine years after that excavation and rocking with the small rock, we, the adobe's floating up, we were starting to be in mud and puddles again. And I went with three-quarter crush this time, thinking it's bigger, I've got a nice base, it'll hold us up and it looks really great, too. So that's been successful on mine so far. So we've got walkway and mailbox issues to hopefully get sorted out. This is my other walkway. Same, same thing, a car parks up against it, we can't get in, deliveries can't get in, and we can't just walk across a yard. Just so much. And then an onsite issue that's specific here, this is the utility trailers parked on the street. That can cause, you know, sightline problems for the Greenway, especially if things park up and get busier. So I just wanted to put a picture of that, that in here, too. So really, I've been looking at what are kind of the very lowest cost possible practical remedies because I recognize that we don't have a ton of resources here. And so there's just sort of a summary, you know, for the inadequate parking infrastructure. Is there some way to either get it scraped and gravelled or add those little low berms like have been done in other parts of the neighborhood and put rock in them also to keep the rock off the street for the bicyclists on the Greenway for safety issues? Again, I looked over all of our codes and I only know, you know, this much of how everything works and jigsaw puzzles together. You know, signage right now is not permitted. I looked it up as a resident, you can't put signage that might mimic something that looks like the city of Milwaukee put it in and you can't put any signage in the right-of-way technically. And we're all, like I said, most of our right-of-ways are seven feet back off the street. So I'm just not quite sure what to do about the potential for signage, also because code does not prohibit parking and blocking mailboxes and walkways. There's no ability for ticketing or towing if people are blocking you and you can't get in or out of your house. So what do we do about that? And in terms of funding, right now, it is not required, residents are not required to gravel their parkways or their rows. So, you know, people who, who do it get all the parking, people who don't, people don't park there, oops. And I'm not suggesting that residents be required to do it, but could there be a way to finance the most basic things possible, like low berms and rock through the Fyllox, through the fees in lieu of construction? I got the answer of where to look for that today from permitting, from Brett. And it looked to me through those codes, 13 point, it's here somewhere, that it could be possible to use Fyllock money on the street improvements for the expenses of doing very basic improvements. Also, in this case, there are really no sidewalks. So having a developer put in sidewalks and the paving, it's like a road to nowhere. It really is wasted money and it would even be better for the developer. Who knows, people are going to be looking, these are going to be for sale. I've thought about, it might be appropriate at a certain point to talk to the developer and say, hey, it'd be better to do a Fyllock because the general street could be improved because people are going to be basing their buying decisions in part on where are they going to park and is it parkable? So in this specific case, I thought that that could, could potentially be an approach. But, you know, for finding funding for doing the very basic improvements, keep the drains clear, keep, you know, get the, get the parking function at least on that half of the street. I don't know what Fyllocks are or how much it buys. And then with the utility trailers, you know, Portland's disallowed them, other cities disallowed them. Is it time to look at changing the code on that to get them off the street? And another thing, even, it hasn't mattered that the residents have used their front yard for extra parking till now. I haven't had time to dig into whether code allows that, disallows that. I don't exactly want to upset my neighbors by, by having them have to cut that and lose their extra parking. But it's kind of an issue if we have all these cars come on the street is who, it's kind of who's, who's winning and who's losing and it being kind of equitable across the board for everybody involved. So, okay, I made it as fast as I could. Oh, my gosh. And I know you guys don't comment back. I saw that it's the next meeting, so I will follow up with that and do whatever needs to be done to follow up with sort of anybody in any department to try to be of help with this, not any kind of pain in the rear about it, except making it workable. Because if we get out ahead of it, then you're not going to have people in here yelling and screaming on this project and future projects and can come up with mechanisms to make it all work. Because we are getting hit with this housing that was wanted. I'm looking forward to maybe having some new nice neighbors. So thank you so much for your time. And I wanted to say thank you for the statement in the pilot as well, but I knew it would make me cry and then she made me cry anyway. Thank you for that little bit of light in this time very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ronelle. Thanks for coming in and for all the folks that are here with you and ceding time to you.
Yep.
All right. I don't have any other, she did mention someone was online. Is there anybody else online who's wanting to talk?
We do have four, four folks in our Zoom audience tonight, but no one's hand is raised.
No one's hands raised. Okay. And we will assume they. Oh, okay. Okay. Great. Great. Okay, with that, we will go on to, we have a pretty short agenda tonight. Oh, it's consent agenda. All right. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council, February 11th, 2025 study session, February 18th, 2025 work session, February 18th, 2025 regular session. And then there are some March 4th, they're not on there.
Those are removed.
Those are removed, okay. Resolution, so, so four and five are scratched. A4 and 5 are scratched. A resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing the purchase of a five-yard dump truck with snow accessories. A resolution granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 305.540 to ORS 307 point, I'm sorry. Let me start that one again. A resolution granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for a 28-unit low-income housing development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Does any member wish to remove a consent agenda item?
Mayor Beatty, sorry, councillor. If I could interject real quick, the script did not have item D, which is on the agenda. So it's otherwise legally noticed, but I have a feeling councillor Stavon Jordan might want to address that. I just wanted to flag that D is not on the script.
Oh. So item D is the approval of an OLCC application and I would like to pull that from the consent agenda.
Okay. All right.
For my rationale?
I, I, I kind of expected that one. So are you the moving side of the table today?
We are, yeah.
Who is? Oh, okay. So we will remove item D and we don't have items A4 and A5. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as revised.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as revised. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None heard? It passes unanimously. And then we will turn to item D, the approval of a OLCC license for B-side records and vintage on Main Street.
Correct. So mayor, I pulled this item because I'm the owner of said establishment. And so I'd like to declare that I have a conflict of interest and I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Good, thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda.
I move to approve item D on the consent agenda as, as presented.
I second.
It's moved and seconded to approve item D on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? So it is four ayes and one abstention. And with that, we conclude the consent agenda. Congratulations to B-side.
Thank you.
Not that that actually conveys the liquor license. Okay. So now we are to council reports, first legislative and then other council reports. And I think we, we haven't really talked about legislative in a while. The last meeting, we ran out of time, so probably doing a little deeper dive tonight. And councillor Scott will start us off, but councillor, council president has made some suggestions as to some bills we might want to focus on, so.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty and councillor, good evening. Yeah. I was, leading up to the day, my thought process, very naively, although I've done this a few sessions already, oh, our list is going to get shorter. Then I checked OLS and started getting emails from the mayor and councillor president and here we are. So just a reminder where we are on key dates. There is a big deadline coming on April 9th in terms of getting a first reading in one of the chambers, our first, the first action in one of the chambers. And then there's some other stuff coming in May and June. And this is our in memoriam pages. So anyone glance at this and correct me if I'm wrong. I checked OLS and these are ones that haven't moved or haven't gone anywhere as of late. So if you don't see something now, you want to email me later, we can always revive it. But these are in memoriam. I'm not bringing these ones back unless you tell me to. They're in the graves.
Let me check.
So roll the sad music and I'm going to flip to the next two pages because there are three pages of in memoriam.
Yeah, we wanted some of them. We wanted that fences one to die, so that's good.
You know, sad music.
Oh, was it? And it didn't go? Okay.
Anybody want to resuscitate right now or you want to email me later?
Yeah, I, I didn't see anything that I think is still alive, so.
Now, back amongst the living. So as a reminder shorthand, if it's yellow, it has something coming up. If it's a light blue, it's had something recently. If it's got purple underlined, we just added it. There were some things that staff put on and maybe one or two that council put on. And if there's an asterisk by it, then there was a council letter sent at some point, a member of council or all councils sent a letter. So there are multiple pages of these. I know we're talking about a deep dive tonight since this is the end of the show, but building, Senate Bill 6, they call it the building permit shot clock, has a work session coming on April 7th. And then the next three all had stuff recently, probably to get them in on the deadline. That came last week or this, or today. Childcare facilities, HB 3560. Crimes, SB 473. And discrimination, HB 3187. All those had a work sessions. Anybody, any other thing else to say about these?
Oh.
A Eugene or Springfield elected official. Senator Floyd Przansky is trampling that bill. So I think there was a case that happened down there.
So I haven't heard anything on the childcare today. I'll, I'll follow up on it tomorrow, but those other two are tomorrow. Yeah, I don't have any news on any of those.
Elections, SB 580 is still floating around out there, requiring action found and posted online. Emergency resilience, HB 3170. It's been a while since I had a hearing, but so that might actually belong in our memoriam, but it's more recent. And then employment, SB 9016. Councillor President, I believe that one was on your list that you sent over today as well, so.
Yeah, I have a list of bills that I kind of flagged for us as areas aligned with our council goals or other things that we've all talked about for areas that we can lean in on, bills that might, I think, be really impactful if we leaned in on. So we can come back to it later if we want to do all of them at once or do it now. I'll do it for you, mayor.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
I had enough time to put your bills on, on the last slide and note the ones that we've already on here, so it's not on the list later, but we can always come back to it. Energy affordability, now we're getting to ones that have stuff coming up on the schedule. HB 3081, the one-stop shop 2.0 has a work session next week. And then a couple, 3179, 3336 have met, met that last deadline. HB 3546, Power Act, I believe this was on your list, too, councillor. With a council letter, it had been sent on this and they have a work session on it next week. And SB 88 has also had a council letter and had a work session at the end of March. So energy affordability ones.
Yeah, so the Power Act is definitely still alive. I know the Citizens Utility Board Group has been, you know, advocating for people to write, write in and try and move it. And the Fair, did we have the, what is it?
Fair Energy Act, I can give you the number.
Yeah, okay. 3179? Oh, it's there. Okay, it's the second one there, yeah. So both of those are still advocating for, I guess that they're still alive. Yeah, and the one, like you said, the ones that have upcoming dates. That's, is that transmission bill? Is that Rep. Gamba's bill?
Yep, Rep. Gamba has a bill on transmission. I don't think that's his, so he has a larger bill about a transmission authority. That bill is scheduled for a work session, but I do not think it will be moving. So some of the bills scheduled for a work session still aren't moving, depending on amendments.
Okay, and you don't know what, so you don't think this one that had a hearing today was his bill?
I don't think so. I think it was his gets one.
One on your list had Gamba flagged by a councillor president. It might, that one might be on the list in a minute.
Okay.
That one was his SDC deferral bill, I had to say. Yep. Yep, this is his gets one, so there it gets are a technology that people will use to be able to help transmission systems account for a larger load.
Okay.
And then firearms, SB 243, a letter has been sent and has a work session on Thursday. And this was just added recently.
Yeah, it just came out of the, yeah. It was hurriedly introduced last week and had a hearing last week. So that one, you know, the, there was the firearms ballot measure, measure 114, that the courts recently upheld. And, and so there's some legislative additions. The legislature would like to make some additions to that. And mainly, it's a, there's a couple of other things in there, but in my view, the big thing was a 72-hour waiting period. And I really was supportive of a 72-hour waiting period. So I wrote a letter in support of that and submitted it last week. There are some other things in that bill that I don't care as much about, but I wanted to advocate for the waiting period. There are a lot, a lot of opposition to that bill. It had, yeah.
Maybe, maybe I'm just a little bit, what was the waiting period about? What is a 72-hour waiting period for?
That, that you have to wait 72 hours from the time of getting the background clearance to actually hand over the firearm. It's sort of a check on, you know, sort of mental illness. It's sort of a check on, you know, sort of mental illness kind of. I mean, that's one of the reasons for doing a waiting period is, is how many crimes happen, how many gun crimes and school shootings happen in a heat of passion kind of thing? And that if you make people wait 72 hours, maybe there will be some stabilization. And that, that's one of the rationales, but, yeah.
Okay. And then HP 2411, industrial site readiness, had a hearing, work session recently. Housing, big topic, 2258, HB 2258, housing study. As far as I had, a hearing and a work session scheduled, and it was just added to our list, I believe, so.
Is that one of the ones on your list? Okay.
And then a whole, then all the others are still, as far as I can tell, have recent activity. Statewide homeownership goal, a letter was sent on it, 2698. Veteran loan refinancing, innovative housing task force, housing study, state senior housing initiative and statewide shelter program.
Okay, I know the, I know the MOC, the other Mayor Beatty testified in favor of the shelter program stuff last week. I don't know what's happened on that, but the two bills that are missing from this are the 2168, which is the big governor's housing bill, and the condo bill, and I don't remember the number for that one, but I'm actually testifying tomorrow on behalf of the MOC in support of the housing, of the condo bill. And I submit, I also submitted a letter, my own letter on that one, a week or two ago.
I'm pretty sure that's on the list that Council President said this afternoon.
Okay.
You said, you sent, you sent a letter on 2168?
I did not send anything on 2168, no, just on the condo bill. Yeah.
And I think as you write that down, 2138 there.
Oh, 2138, there you go. There you go.
All right. Couple of topics here, land use.
There we go.
SB 974, energy zoning clock. Oh, I guess there's the governor's housing bill.
Yeah.
They both have work sessions. 974 is just added to our list this, recently. 2950, DLCD, citizen involvement goal update, had a work session recently. I didn't have anything scheduled now. Couple of records things still have legs. Extending, 2533 extending retention period for certain records. And then SB 1077 is a placeholder bill. That if you follow records law, there was one proposed by the Public Records Advisory Council in the last session that didn't go anywhere. This is the legacy of that bill. And it sounds, I just got an email from Public Records Advocate this afternoon that it has legs. And so I will be interested to see what comes out of that. But some record stuff happening. The transportation, e-bike rebate program had a work, a work session recently. And then 3119, clean truck rule attachment has a work session coming up. Urban growth, 967, had a work session today. And then the two veteran bills that we're following have had, had work, had work sessions today as well. Low-income medical voucher program and hyperbaric oxygen therapy. And then water, the two that Counselor Massey put on, have work sessions coming up soon. Increase fee for water right grants and water operator training, apprenticeship. And then here's the list that Council President sent this afternoon. I haven't had time to check the status in OLS, but I did take out the ones that were otherwise up on the list. So these are the rest of them.
Yep. That's the condo one, yeah. So I can walk through, some of these we already have. My thought was, the mayor and I had been talking about using this as like an opportunity to figure out, are there bills that we could lean in on? And I was thinking, unique to like us as a city, where would our voice be most impactful? Where people would take note and I think see us lean in? And especially bills that maybe are moving, but maybe not guaranteed to move, or bills that just could use a little extra oomph in people testifying. First is Fair Energy Act. This is one that I think they're planning on amending still. It doesn't have a clear runway forward. And saying that we, like, this fits in with our larger conversation about utility rates and how we want to support this. And so testifying to talk about winter rate hikes, which is one proposal, and multi-year rate setting, I think are two components of the bill to really emphasize that we care about. I think this is a good opportunity for us. Any questions on, I guess we can go bill by bill and see. So Fair Energy Act does a few things. One, it says you can't do rate hikes in the winter. A lot of time, rate hikes go into effect January 1st. And this is also the time when energy is most expensive. And so to make the cost not as difficult on consumers, they're pushing it back when you can do this, setting a window. It also says that when you're setting rates, you do it over multiple years as opposed to year by year. So there can be some kind of forecasting out for consumers that they can do and some things that they can expect and rely on. It also then adds into the PUC's consideration when they're setting rates, certain kind of consumer-focused criteria to try and make the rate setting more closely, kind of like follow the needs of consumers. And I think that third element is one that is still being worked out the most because there are some questions about the legality of certain actions there and also, I think, the impact that those would have if it will translate to lower rates than people want.
Does, does any part of the bill, the one about the multi-year planning, does it make them adhere to whatever they're asking for in those years? Like, can they change their, like, in two years, like, oh, we said we were going to do this, but now we need to increase on this because of inflation or whatever? Does it hold them to those amounts?
So the, this would be, the PUC would approve rates over a multi-year.
Right.
So this would be what they have to do.
Right, okay.
And according to the CUB mail, it's got a hearing on Wednesday.
Yep, I think this is one, so reaching out to, I think, if we're interested in this one, putting together a letter and sending it to offices saying, this is something that we hear from our residents about. This is something that's very important to address. We urge you to consider supporting this. Rep. Gamba's in support of this bill, so it's not like we can go to Rep. Gamba and say, please support the bill. It's kind of preaching to the choir. But I think helpful for other folks to see cities really focusing on this. If we sent that letter out to all offices as opposed to on the text of the bill, I think that that might be helpful as people consider all of this.
Do you mean sending it to, like, all legislators, all committee members? What are you, what are you saying?
I think I would send it to, I, I'm biased. All Democrats, I think, are the ones figuring out how they're going to land as a caucus here. And I think that will, to be candid, I think that'll move the needle the most. I think we can send it to all legislators and send some BCC them so they don't see we're sending it to everyone. And I think that might be helpful.
So what do we do? I mean, we, we don't have a letter for people to say, yeah, I sign off on that or not.
Yep.
So how do we do that on this, at this juncture?
So I think what we could do is with these, assign maybe two counselors, and I guess this goes for the whole list. If we want to move on any of these, maybe we assign two counselors to draft the letter. And for some of these, we have a little bit more of a runway. But in general, we can say this is something that we want a letter on. We're going to have two counselors create a letter and then they can send it on the city's path. Or we could find some other way. Maybe you can partner with another counselor or find some way to send out.
I mean, Adam and I did submit a joint letter on energy affordability. I think you probably mentioned this one, yeah. We did a childcare one too. But I think we did, like, a couple of these energy, maybe three of them in our letter. But that was three weeks ago or whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know if that letter, could you pull up that? I don't know. I mean, I don't know if, yeah, yeah, if you could pull that letter up, that's one where maybe we could knock it off because we do have some text and maybe everybody would be in agreement. And that would hit a couple of them. So it would hit Fair and it would hit Power Act.
Yep.
Because I think they were both in there.
It's the one that was regarding the Power Act last time, right? Yep.
Right?
Okay. That's it? Oh, it was just Power Act? Oh, no, yeah, it was, I thought it was more than that. Okay. So yeah, if people can read that. Is that SB 288? Is it dead?
That one I heard, I know the Senate bill's far less than I do the House, I will say, but I've heard that that one might not be moving.
So if people are generally supportive of this language, I mean, we can reconfigure this as a new letter, drop SB 88 out, you know, make it about the two bills, and make it from everyone if people are supportive or, you know.
I think that that sounds good. I think the, as you're tweaking language, maybe saying something about, like, affordability is something to hear from our residents. And nowhere is this more clear than, or maybe like a key areas, utilities, these two bills are your best bills to do this, please pass it. Because I think the, I guess why I say this is a touch point where we can make an impact. I think House Democrats know that affordability matters. They know that utilities are an area that is uniquely cost burdened this cycle. And really showing that people are paying attention to this will be valuable.
Okay. Yeah. Counselor? Okay, okay, well, I'll work with, I'll work with, I guess, the Council President on messing the language, but we'll, we'll go forward on those two bills. Okay.
And also, do you need me to send you this word version of this, or do you?
That'd be great.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Two bills done. Other bills I can read out or list here.
So your list, Scott will get us back to your list. So Governor's middle housing is, I don't think it's ready. I mean, I think there's still another amendment coming out. And I have seen what, I have talked to Joseph about it. I have seen what some of the other cities have submitted where they're going through and going, we like this, we don't like this, we like this, we already do this. I mean, I think that's the kind of letter we would have to do on that bill. I don't think we could take a blanket, you know, we oppose, or a blanket, we endorse. I mean, I think there's a, there's a mixed bag there. And, yeah, on the LOC call on Friday, they said another, a dash four maybe now is coming out. So I don't really feel like we can do a letter on that one. I do hope, maybe we can get out, I mean, maybe we can get out the stuff that Joseph has done and that, I think it was Wilsonville's? I can't remember which city it was, Tigerd or Wilsonville that, where he took their breakdown of the elements and then sort of added his own interpretation. You know, maybe we can work on that before the April 15th. I don't get the sense it's going to be passed by April 15th. Yeah.
I think, so I think this one is moving and it's scheduled to work, be worked, I think, on the 7th. This one, there are two really controversial elements that I think are still, frankly, just a controversial element. CCNRs, like HOAs, right now are included in the bill. So it would say that middle housing requirements are applied to CCNRs. And that CCNRs that prevent for middle housing are void and unenforceable. And so I think, as opposed to going line by line on this bill, which is, I think, largely settled in the eyes of a committee, focusing on this one controversial piece and saying something in support of that is our biggest opportunity to weigh in on, like, unsettled question or relatively less settled question.
Well, among the other things I heard in various forums that have been discussing this bill is frontage improvements. There were, whether frontage improvements could be required for middle housing and what, and that kind of relates to, that's the money we heard tonight. And, and to what extent, like, is it only, you know, I think, I think where it was going to come down is you can require frontage improvements in front of the property, but you can't require improvements for other impacts down the street or, you know, to an intersection or whatever. Anyway, there were several things that I would be very uncomfortable expressing support for in this bill, so I would not be for expressing support for this bill, I guess. I realize it might, yeah, yeah. I think the whole way it's been handled has been pretty awful. And like I said, there's a lot in it that people are still pretty worked up about. So, yeah. And I don't really, I mean, the CCNRs, we don't have a ton of HOAs that have, I mean, we have some, but, you know, that's not our biggest issue, I think, but, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm definitely not for weighing in on this one until we, you know, can discuss it with Joseph and have Plannings input and stuff.
Yep, I know, so that frontage piece was removed out of the bill. So that part is gone. Traffic analysis, I know applies to townhomes, 12 units or more per townhomes there. So the governor keeps, like, hearing from cities, tweaking it. But I think relatively, this bill is pretty settled. And so weighing in on it now is one that I don't think we necessarily need to do. It's going to be contentious thing.
SDCs?
SDC deferral, this bill is being worked and moved. There were two SDC deferral concepts. One, proposed by the home builders that would mandate SDC deferrals for single-family homes. And one proposed by Rep. Gamba that would allow cities the option to defer SDCs and create kind of a liability insurance for cities who do defer these SDCs. The bill is heading down to ways and means, and so that means.
Are both of them or just?
The home builders is not moving.
Okay.
Which is, I am pretty happy about that. The Gamba bill will now need to be funded in some capacity. He, I think, has set it at $10 million in the first biennium. But $10 million will be in competition for all the other funding that's happening. And so saying that we support SDC deferral and that this is a component of housing production that we think will benefit us is something that we can do in support of Rep. Gamba's bill and send that to the co-chairs.
Well, and just FYI, both Joseph and I did letters in support of the bill for the hearing last week or whenever it was. But I get that the ways and means is a separate thing and we need to do it again, I guess.
You said there was, there is funding for that?
That's the question. Ways and means decides whether there's funding for that or not.
But there was initially 10 million, you were saying?
So the state has about $900 million in discretionary funds right now. If our budget, that may revenue forecast will tell us to be of less money or more money. So all of the programs that we're competing for, any new programs, are competing for those $900 million. The governor's new investments in housing infrastructure, statewide shelter, behavioral health account for over $900 million. And that doesn't include anything that the legislature wants to do. And so all of those $900 million will be a really, like, tooth and nail fight for it. So the bill says 10 million right now. It might not be 10 million, but if this is a program that we, I think, if we can speak to the fact that as we've seen growth, SDC deferral is a real incentive that people are asking for and it's a valuable thing for cities to be able to do, I think that this is a place we can weigh on on that might be helpful for.
Yeah, I, I like the SDC deferral. It worries me that there's no funding or anything for that, and that's what worries me.
Well, I will tell you that this, this concept has evolved a little bit so that you have the insurance, you know, backing it up. Because other, I mean, there have been cases where there's been SDC deferrals and the cities have been stiffed. Okay? And so that was a bit concerned. That's why they rolled in the, the insurance backup. But you know, the, I don't, it may not really make a big difference about whether we endorse it or not, but, man, I'm not sure $10 million is going to go very far.
Well, cities have to opt in and then apply or something. I'm not exactly sure what it, what, how, what the process would be, but and frankly, I, I hear from a lot of mayors that they, you know, of cities that have offered deferred SDCs that most developers don't take them up. But Mark's convinced that there are developers who need this and that, I guess, I guess maybe it is more the middle housing developers or what we heard earlier about them being newer developers maybe or something. So our developers working on a smaller margin. on a smaller margin. So, you know, I'd like to support him in this, support the concept.
You might get more interest, actually, considering the uncertainty with everything going on right now. Like, you actually, because this is, it's why at our West meeting, we decided to increase the SDCs to the full amount, but to phase it in over the next five years because of so much uncertainty, and we don't want to stagnate development. So, I mean, you know, this could, there might be more interest in it from developers just considering what's coming through, I mean, out of DC.
Your comment about the 10 million is exactly why the chair really struggled with the concept at first. And I think what Rep. Gamba might say to that is, so few of the developers actually have to default on their SDCs, that that 10 million can be stretched out to cover, like, $100 million of liability. There were questions about, how do you know that that's actually going to be the case, and how can you guarantee against $100 million of potential losses with just a $10 million pot? So I think those questions are at the heart of what makes this bill challenging for some folks.
So are we willing to do a letter in support?
Yeah, I'm open to it.
I mean, $10 million is a start. You know, if it ends up being a program that works and does, you know, finance things that wouldn't have gotten financed before, then, then next time around, they'll put more money in it.
Well, it's not a mandate.
Right.
And so the cities get to choose.
Right.
Okay, so it's an option.
Right, right, right.
I agree. 10 million is very small, but it's, it's a start. It's a foot in the door. And this is a policy that would be going in a, in a different direction. So I appreciate Rep. Gamba's leadership on this.
Okay, so we'll do a letter on that one. Okay?
Good, for clarification, who's doing, who's drafting the first letter?
I guess we're, I guess we're doing the letter, yeah. Unless anybody, I don't, do not want to take the fun away from other people. So please feel free to volunteer to do the letter, if anyone else wants. Oh, going to bed.
I was just putting the goose all the way down, no confusion.
Okay. Okay, you too, you too. Well, the condo one is kind of done tomorrow, I think. The letters are in, I'm going to testify tomorrow. Do you still think there's a-
Well, so here's going to be, for all of these really contentious bills, what's likely going to happen is you're going to have a caucus process where everyone sits together in caucus and talks about whether they want the bill removed or not. If it doesn't have, you have 36 members in the House, 18 members in the Senate, if it doesn't have 15 in the Senate, or 30 in the House, it's unlikely to move forward. And so sending out an explainer, I think, same thing with SDC deferral. People might not necessarily listen to our, yes, you should support SDCs, but they certainly would appreciate the context about why, how we've used SDC deferrals and why it might be helpful to a city. Same thing with condos. I think if we send a letter to all folks explaining the challenges that we've had in condo growth, and our challenges, frankly, as like a community with homeownership, and how this is so important to us, I think that context can be really helpful for people.
So you're suggesting not just submitting it to the committee, but sending it to all the-
Yeah, all the, you want to do, read letter?
I think specific letters. I think SDC deferral, we would just send to the co-chairs. Condo liability, before it's been caucused, I think it's great to send to every member. Fair Energy Act, I think, and the Power Act, I think it's good to send to every member. And I think it will just depend a lot of bill by bill.
Did we do a condo liability as a council?
No, I did one personally, and tomorrow I'm testifying, and the Metro Mayor's Consortium did, did one, and tomorrow I'm testifying on behalf of the Metro Mayor's Consortium. Yeah, and I mean, I have those letters. I mean, that'd be an easy one to craft a letter for. I have my letter, I have their letter, you know, it'd be easy to cobble a letter together, if you think another letter is, is useful.
Do you think it is?
I think of any of the bills up there, that one is the biggest kind of question mark in session. So, and I think frankly, that one also matters. Some of these are going to move without us, and they're kind of going to impact us as they will, but maybe not a lot. I think the condo liability really could impact our city.
Okay, I don't think that's the right number, though. That's coming up as a bill from Rep. Tran on the Oregon Health Authority.
Well, that's definitely the wrong number.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can sort out the number.
Yeah.
We can sort out the number later, but, okay, I was just trying to, 3748, oh, well. Okay. I mean, I can work with, I can work with pulling together a letter. Like I said, I have the models. I was just trying to figure out what the timeline is. What do you, do you know about the timeline?
I think we're going to caucus it, not tomorrow, so possibly Thursday. They have not, I will say it inside your baseball with this one, they haven't received the amendment back from LC. So right now, it still says a study bill.
Oh, okay.
Which is pretty tricky, so.
Okay. Okay. Anybody concerned if we submit a letter in support of that condo liability bill? No? Okay, great. I don't know, the 0% down payment.
So this one is kind of, it's similar to the SDC deferral bill. Right now, credit unions have the ability to give home loans for 0% down payment, but there are some concerns about, like, can the state provide some, like, liability coverage for them when they're doing these? Yeah. Yeah, and so this would be kind of like a state insurance fund for community, or some credit unions, to be able to provide 0% down payment assistance to people, I think, at some percent AMI.
Is that mortgage insurance?
It would be, I think it's-
Or like the VA loan, like a guaranteed?
Some, something similar.
State-backed?
This would be backing the mortgage companies who are able to, so I think it's very similar.
Nice.
Yep. So I think to our homeownership goals, this would be a good program to support. Similar to SDC, this is likely going to go to ways and means of sending something to the co-chair, saying, we want to see more homeownership, this is a great way to do it. Would be a great way to do.
When does that need to be, when would a letter need to be written if we decide to do one?
Sending stuff out to the co-chairs, we've got a little bit of time. So we could bring back letters next council meeting and discuss them then.
Are others open to a letter?
Before we start talking about letters, I'm not, I'm not sold on this idea.
Yeah.
I mean, it almost sounds like corporate welfare.
It is, it is limited to first-time homebuyers.
Yeah, but you're backing the credit union.
Yeah.
You know, you're underwriting the credit union, and we, you know, the credit union, that's, that's their, that's their job. They evaluate credit.
I think-
Is it underwriting the credit union, or are you backing, are you guaranteeing the loan? Are you guaranteeing the credit union that you're going, they're going to get their money either way? That's the same as a VA loan. It's a zero-money-down loan, that's guaranteed, that's backed, that's why you can go zero down. That's how I bought my house.
And I think the, the difference that I would hear, you are kind of doing a corporate support. I think credit unions tend to be pretty good community actors compared to some other lenders, and so I think-
I don't, I don't deny that, but I, you know, I just, I don't know, I'm not sold on that idea.
Yeah. Well, this one, we have more time to-
Discuss it.
Discuss it, write a letter. So what I could do is bring back a one-pager from the Capitol on this bill, and I can follow up with you one-on-one about it, and then we can figure out what we want to do. House Bill 2025, I think, is another extremely impactful one. This is the transportation package, and-
Is there actually a bill out now?
So that is what the bill will be.
Okay.
But there, I forget what day they're actually rolling it out, but they're going to be unveiling the specifics of the transportation package, I believe, on Thursday. Some things that I think we're going to want to look at as a city and then come back and comment on, the stiff increase, if it's not sufficient, explaining why this is so important for our statewide transit programs, I think will be really beneficial. I think explaining the clear impact that, like, local projects will have will be really important. And I think also, this will be a real moment for us to communicate with Rep. Gamba about how we want to coordinate our city and our state representatives' asks here. So this is one that I think absolutely tracks for future conversations, because this will be the big thing this session.
Can you, can you forecast or begin to forecast the, the timeline process of those conversations? Like, a lot of times, these discussions end up happening real fast at the end.
Yeah.
And if we need to spend some time determining alignment between the city's interests, the county's interests, and Rep. Gamba's articulated interests, then I feel like those conversations need to be kind of, you know, at least, I don't know, at least we need a head start on some of that.
Yeah.
So do you have an idea of when this will start moving really quickly?
This will be, so this Thursday conversation is when the vast majority of caucus will have seen the details of the transportation package for the first time. And so this will be a real moment. I, I think this will put us in the fast track for a lot of this. This has happened a little bit later than transportation package has been passed. I think you're right, at the end of session is when a lot of the details, or I think that's when the rubber hits the road. So we'll have a little bit more of a runway. This bill, I would say, starting a conversation with Rep. Gamba in April would be a good way forward, because it also, at some point, representatives will give their gut reaction to certain components of this bill. And if there are components that are real sticking points for us, that we really want to make sure that we're aligned with him on, I think that that is a valuable timeline.
When is C4 planning to discuss?
I don't know if they have this, I don't know if they know it's coming out on Thursday. So unclear when they're planning to discuss it.
I'm happy to say, I, I actually don't know the schedule for C4 anymore automatically. When does, when does that group meet again?
I know.
They meet when my calendar tells me to meet.
Yes.
Not every Wednesday. Let's see, it's frequently, Rebecca, I live by my calendar and where it tells me to go. I don't know, at a time.
It is Thursday morning.
Okay.
Oh, no, Thursday evening.
Thursday evenings, Wednesday mornings for Metro Sub. Third Thursdays, I thought. But nope, I've got C4 meeting this Thursday.
So the Metro Subcommittee, actually, so the large C4 will meet before the Metro Subcommittee?
Yep.
This month?
Yeah.
And this, like, everyone gets a copy of this tomorrow?
I think everyone gets a copy on Thursday.
On Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. So then feasibly, C4 will be all abuzz about gut reactions-
Yeah.
-on this. And there might be some conversation about a, a joint message of some sort.
Yeah.
Name even lobbying.
Yeah.
So I guess, you know, I feel like we have to be mindful about the timing of the pieces of this, if we're negotiating, or, or like, kind of thread the needle between the conversations that are happening at C4, the pre-conversation we need to have with Rep. Gamba. I almost feel like we should reach out, you know, and just kind of say, like, hey, we anticipate that this information is going to drop tomorrow, C4 meeting is that eve, or not tomorrow, but Thursday, C4 is going to meet, you know, we're interested in your thoughts as soon as you have them developed.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
And it seems like the most appropriate would either be the mayor or council president to reach out and do that.
Um, I just had a crazy idea, and I was looking at what our agenda is for next Tuesday. We have a pretty short agenda next Tuesday. Could we invite Mayor Gamba, I mean, Rep. Gamba to come? I don't know if he could, you know, he's rarely out of Salem before 8:00 PM, but-
I think Tuesdays might honestly be joint transportation days, but let me check to make sure. Yep, he will, he will be in joint transportation next Tuesday.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, then that-
I like your thought, though.
Well, I was gonna say, should we invite him to come talk to us in a meeting, or should we assign two counselors to just meet with him individually, you know, on our behalf? I think that's the question in my mind.
I would say, given how quickly these things evolve, and how volatile conversations about transportation have potential to be, that, that someone talks with him sooner than later, and then maybe a summary of that conversation comes back with a summary of, you know, the C4 conversations, like, next week. And then we can have a discussion about how we want to proceed around, you know, aligning messaging, or where those, you know, pardon the pun, but speed bumps might, you know, kind of come up in the conversations. I think that, that'd be my proposal.
And as long as the, I hope I'm not speaking incorrectly, I'm pretty sure it is Thursday when they're doing a overview of the components, but I could bring that summary of the components to our council meeting on Tuesday, so we could have that conversation, if we've got time in the agenda, to all discuss the components, and then we can do a red line version or-
Well, it's good, okay. I mean, you can, you can be prepared to report on C4.
Yeah.
And then, and that piece. And then, do you want to try and talk to Rep. Gamba? Do you want me to try and talk to Rep. Gamba?
I can talk to him. I'll just pull him aside on the floor. That's easy enough.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. I had, did hear rumor, and I, well, more than rumor, I did hear, and I'm, I was looking at my notes, and I guess I don't have my, I don't have the notes I took at the LOC call last week, but I did hear a rumor that 50, 30, 20 is maybe on the table. But we've been told by people all session that, no, 50, 30, 20 is sacred, and is protected, but I've been hearing some talk that it's maybe actually on the table.
I haven't heard that, but I do think the, the key moment will be for new revenue streams, making sure that they're tied to 50, 30, 20 as well. So not just state gas tax, but any new potential road use charge or something else that's adopted.
Okay. Okay. I think if that, I mean, that in itself is going to require a lot of lobbying.
They force everyone to get these electric cars, and they're like, we're going to charge you extra for them.
Because the revenue for maintenance goes away.
It's funny, because they did the same thing with parking. Oh, get all your electric cars, now there's nowhere to park. You know, it's like-
I mean, it would be amazing if we actually reformed the property tax system, and then-
Yeah, we could, that'd be great, too. I mean, you know, I'm, my ears perk up when I hear this, but, you know, it's a rumor, and it's kind of late to be talking about such a big issue, isn't it?
I think-
Yeah, crazier things happen.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I think the, the, the gas tax increase that would have to happen to make everything they feel like needs to happen for ODOT would be so high that it's not palatable. And so, yeah, there's a question, that's why the question's on the table, is my understanding, yeah.
I think, from what I'm seeing, I haven't been that worried, but I can double, double check, and we'll see on Thursday.
All right, 2688?
This one, and there's one other bill that maybe I didn't include, but the, this bill and the unemployment insurance for striking workers are two bills that I think we might have a different stance than the League of Cities on. Both of these are bills that would protect off-site prevailing wage, would apply our prevailing wage standards to off-site construction. So if you're doing a unique piece of construction over $400,000 for a certain project that you're paying public dollars on, right now, you have to pay prevailing wage, the standard wage in your region. A lot of what's happened is people have started to do off-site construction of components of this and bringing it in, and that off-site work is not subject to prevailing wage. This would say, we apply the same prevailing wage standards we have to onsite construction, to the off-site as well, to make sure that people are getting prevailing wage at all parts of the project. This is one that I think LOC is not a fan of, but I can go back and check, it seems like the type of thing LOC tends not to be a fan of. It seems like the type of thing LOC tends not to be a fan of.
I haven't heard discussion of this one in either MMC or LOC calls. But I do know 916, the strike, the unemployment for striking workers is definitely one that has been a big subject of conversation among the mayors. Although the MMC didn't take a position on it, I mean, all the mayors are concerned about it because I think everybody thinks they would have had a strike this year. I think we would have had a strike this year, probably. It will make striking more appealing. So there's a lot of concern around that one. I mean, people don't want to come out against it because they don't want to come out against unions, but there is a lot of concern about that bill.
Among the business community, too. It's a big, big topic at the chamber. And, you know, I, I don't even know if I'm a big fan of it, because that's what I worry about, too, it's, you know.
And it will, apparently, I don't know enough about who pays into unemployment, but apparently, cities, governments tend to pay 100%. So, you know, the lift for, for governments will be high. So the fiscal impact, combined with the strike likelihood, has a lot of mayors very concerned about it.
I am fine to be the voice of opposition on this one. I think that providing unemployment insurance to people when they strike, one is a bit of fiscal guarantee to people who are in a really tough position. You're already striking over wages that aren't sufficient. And then to go on the picket line is a really challenging position to be in, especially without the guarantee that you'll get wages given back to you. I think we were really nice to do back pay in our contract negotiations. But that's not something that happens for everyone. And this is kind of related to that. If you're not getting back pay for the time that you're on strike, it can be really challenging for folks to afford to go on strike. And that imbalance, I think, makes it really hard for working people to be able to stand up for their rights. So I think that this is a bill that I'd like us to weigh in on, but if that's not what the majority wants, I'm totally fine with that, too.
Well, I guess I'm not, I'm not interested in weighing in on 916. I would be interested in hearing staff, you know, budget and, and engineering views on this one, to see if maybe, I mean, you know. I mean, when I've talked to Jennifer, we're already paying prevailing wage. So maybe there's sort of no skin off our nose in supporting this one. I'd like to kind of know that.
Yeah, this is, I, I've not looked into this one, so I'll have to go back to the team and report back.
Other views?
Yeah, I, I won't weigh in on 916. And I'm with you, Mayor. I have the same concerns.
I would need more information, yeah, before deciding.
That sounds good. Off-site prevailing wage, I did check LOC is opposed to that one. So part of the reason I bring it is if we want to break from LOC, that's an area where we can. But again, I think I'm fine to speak with the united voice.
Does it say why LOC is opposed? Do they, do they give a reason?
I can send their testimony, but I would imagine their testimony in general with these things is it will raise costs.
Is it?
There's a lot of research to the contrary, that prevailing wage laws don't necessarily raise costs. I think there's some current concerns that LOC has regardless.
Is, is off-site still within the state of Oregon? Or is off-site, you know, somewhere else in the country or the world?
Off-site would just apply to the state of Oregon. So if you're doing something off-site within the state of Oregon.
I see. All right, thank you.
And with that, not to cut off conversation or anything else, but following up on letters. There are a lot of letters mentioned tonight. I think I got notes on them. We'll follow up next time. But from, just to clarify what was sent in last week, I'm aware of one bill that Mayor Beatty sent, SB 243. And then from two weeks ago, I think there was discussion about a general utility statement that it might have been crafted by Councilor Costerbody, but those are the things I'm tracking.
Yeah, you were drafting something. Didn't you say you were drafting something last time we met? I'm not sure what general utility statement means, but.
That was the one that I wrote, that I just sent myself.
Oh, okay, okay.
You sent it, okay.
Yeah, I did.
And that's that for this evening, for that.
All right. I feel like we're forgetting something, but.
Council reports?
Well, no, I mean, on legislative. Before we go, we will go on to council reports. Anybody have any other legislative? I don't, I definitely don't have legislative here. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you, Scott, and, well, get to work on our letters. Okay, so council reports. You have one? Oh, okay. Thought you were chomping at the bit to give your council report. Okay, Councilor Savinord?
I don't have a report.
No? Okay. Counsel, Councilor Mathie?
Yeah, I was reading this one report I was going to give, and it sounds so familiar. I thought I'd given it before, but the dates don't match up, so I'll, tell me if you've heard this before. So basically, you know, they got the evaluation of the sediment for, for Kellogg Creek, and, you know, basically, you know, have to remove 300,000 cubic feet. And we had planned for that worst case scenario, so. They have, the staff has, you know, brought Michelle Bynum's staff in on Kellogg Creek and the various earmarks and the history and that kind of thing to get them up to speed. The.
How much sediment do you think, did they say they have to remove?
300,000 cubic feet.
Wow.
But the Port of Portland has a 1 million cubic foot hole they need to fill. So we think we may have a ready-made place to put it.
And they'll take contaminated sediment?
Let's just stop there. Let's just stop there. Let's just stop there. So, you know, ongoing work, you know, with the streamside stewards and, and that kind of thing are, are ongoing. The, a good bit, we had, you know, we were setting on a, you know, a lot of money there for a while, and most of that has now been spent down, so the balance is, and the fund is down to something that the, that the watershed councils were familiar with dealing with. That's like, it's, you know, it's like, you know, half a million or something like that. They're going to do a bio blitz on May 17th with, you know, collecting specimens and that kind of thing. And they're going to be hosting 200 students from Rowell Middle School on May 22nd. And they have all sorts of tabling events coming up. The, you know, they're checking in with the state periodically and the, you know, with the priorities with the ODFFW and ODOT on aquatic passage priorities. Kellogg remains the number one priority. So if there's any money, we should be in the, you know, in the batter's box. So other things coming up, they're going to do the native plant sale in the fall this year rather than the spring. And they have a grant due here to Wes the middle of April for the, some remediation in Three Creeks. I'm going to go to PARB. Earth Day is going to be really focused on the B-City rollout, as we've heard earlier. And Ally reported on the latest DAC and the system plans, you know, and the inputs that came from, you know, the community inputs. There seems to be a lot of interest in water features and trails connecting, you know, connectivity between parks. You know, which sounds good, but it's probably, probably hard to do just because of the way that the parks are, you know, spread out. I'm not sure how that's going to be, but that came up in the public testimony. And there's continuing discussion about the park deserts and missing parks, you know, east of here and in the incorporated areas. There's actually a discussion at the DAC about a possible levy and an election in the future. And the PARB has a number of openings. They have like four openings. We have six applicants, so we can at least meet the, meet that requirement. And there was a sort of a general discussion about how when folks come to the PARB, and it might be true in a lot of other committees, is that they really don't know what they're supposed to do. They don't know the baseline of information that they know to have. So they already, actually sort of took it on themselves to start a, you know, sort of a handbook, you know, that will get down to basic definitions and background and that kind of thing. So at least you hand the new appointee, you know, this handbook, and it's, you know, their homework for the first meeting, which I think is a great idea, probably apply that to a lot of other committees and boards. And not on the, on the committee assignments, but the mayor was out of town, and Will was, you know, stuck in Salem. So I, I attended a, a county strategic planning meeting because the county is coming up on their strategic plan that they want to adopt this summer. And so I was there with three mayors and one other city councilors. And it was hosted by, you know, a consultant who's worked with the county for, gosh, almost 10 years now in doing these kinds of things. The good news is that the county is going out in a more concerted effort than in the past about getting community input, so therefore they have these sessions. And they've had some community sessions and that kind of thing. And quite frankly, I was, you know, didn't know any of this. And so they said, there's a public form you can fill out. And, you know, during the strategic planning session in the form, they sort of ask, you know, a basic question like, what are the most pressing issues facing the county over the next five years? It's sort of a free form, open-ended question, and you can, you know, write whatever you want. And so they said it's on the county website. So I went to the county website, you know, after the meeting, and it was hard to find, really hard to find. And, you know, if I did a search or strategic planning, I came up with the 2004 or the 2011, you know, reports and that kind of thing. And I finally found it in the news section, okay? And it was number 12 at the bottom of the page. And I just checked it again, and now it's on page two, and I think it's about number 15 or 16. So I actually pointed this out, but obviously they haven't done anything to sort of elevate this. So I pointed out to you, if you want to, you know, provide some input, it's on page two right now of the news section. And even when you find it, it's not really apparent about what it is because it says, county to hold public listening sessions in Milwaukee. They had it over at the Grange over here. But if you open that page, it'll be a link down at the bottom that'll take you to that, you know, that open-ended question if you desire to participate. And I would urge you to do that.
Council President?
As the mayor has requested, I've got a quick summary of what's happening with the Rafa grants, especially if you all saw on Facebook, a really cool opportunity there in the Step 2 program with Railroad Ave. Rafa has two parts, Rebecca, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Step 1 and Step 2. Step 1 are the like, big projects that are happening across the entire region. There are a few projects in contention. Generally, this would be, I think it's TV Highway, some work around the Montgomery Part Streetcar Expansion, 82nd Avenue Bus Rapid Transit, and Sunrise Corridor. This is.
Burnside?
Burnside Bridge is one. Yep, yeah. So there's some jockeying for how these different projects would all fit. Sunrise is the big ask coming from Clackamas County. 82nd Ave would come into Clackamas County, but it's not one that I think people were pushing for as much at a county level. That's Step 1. Step 2 is smaller projects that localities across the region can apply for. Clackamas County tends to have less applicants than other parts of the region, and so. But these funds are not distributed equally across all counties, which has been a point of contention in the past. The projects all get initial ratings like best, good, and I'm forgetting the last category, but let's say mediocre. Our project for Railroad falls in the good category, and now we've moved Step 2 to the public comment phase. So can apply for public comment. The Railroad Ave project has the most public comment of any project on that proposed list for Step 2 so far. I think this is a really good sign. I think if we can keep putting public comment in for it, it's going to be something that I raised in the C4 meeting to have, hopefully, a coordinated county conversation about this. We're meeting in April to have a first discussion about Step 2 in May, the full C4, that's Metro Sub. The full C4 is endorsing something in May, so April 1st conversation, May 2nd conversation. And then we'll move forward there, and Metro will be deciding between projects. So right now, I would say, apply and add your public comment to this project, because it can't hurt to get more, but Rebecca might have more.
Burnside is Step 1?
Burnside is Step 1.
Okay.
Yep.
So my only thought here would be, we would need to make sure that the J-PAC rep is completely on board with this project and can articulate that at a regional level. Because if that does not happen, I mean, we're, we're lucky that we don't have to compete in any way with Burnside because that has regional and state support. But if there's anything that could be feasibly seen as in competition with Railroad, then J-PAC would, we would need to make sure that, that could be articulated at that regional table.
There are like eight Clackamas County projects on the survey.
Yeah.
So I just, I just want to be like, I just want to say that public input is important, and it's not the only thing that factors in in this decision-making. So we have to do our part in making sure that the advocates at the, at the right tables are in line with what we feel is a priority.
I think that's a good point. It merits a conversation with Mayor Joe Buck, so I'll check in with him.
Okay, thank you.
And for those of you who, I mean, we can send the survey link around, or maybe we'll send it to MRR Scott and let them send it around. It's out there on Facebook, for those of you who are Facebook users, but, yeah. And part of the reason we have the largest number is because Mike Milwaukee got it out there to everybody.
We could include it in our Friday email, too.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. Okay, other things, Mr. Anderson?
Nothing else to add there.
Okay. I've got a couple that I hope I can keep short. Johnson Creek Confluence Project, that's the Johnson Creek Watersheds Council project to put woody debris, big logs into the mouth of Johnson Creek. There was some question earlier in the year, right after the inauguration, when all the federal funding was so in chaos as to whether they might lose federal funding. They did not. They are moving forward with that project. They are a little bit worried about what the tariffs might mean in terms of the metal that they use, and also in terms of the fuel costs for the project, but they are moving forward. I had a conversation with them last week, and Peter Passarelli is going to be their sort of contact person for sort of, you know, we're going to need to help with public outreach about, you know, in advance of that. I did invite them to come present to us on that. I, I suggested about six weeks before they plan to start construction, so that's likely, you know, Ju, late June or July. Because I think they're, they're looking at an August construction period. The SHS Housing Measure meetings keep bubbling along. There was yesterday, it competed, it was at exactly the same time as the regional mayor's forums or the county mayor's forum. So I didn't get to go, but there was a presentation by some speakers that supposedly been, been videotaped. And when I get the link to the videotape, I will share it in case anyone else wants to watch. It's a weird, weird conversation, and I don't know where it's going to go. But I'm going to lots of meetings about it. And then I did want to talk about, oh, I mentioned earlier that I, at the work session, that I talked with John Sarah at Trimed about better service for international ways. So we'll see if that. So we'll see if that goes anywhere. I also, at the mayor's event yesterday, Laura Edmonds, who is the county's economic development person, was there, and so I told her that, you know, the county used to be wanting to work with us on North Milwaukee industrial area, and she's like, oh, we still do, we still do. So she's supposedly going to hit Joseph up for a meeting soon, so we'll see if anything comes of that. And then the last thing I want to talk about is parks. The council, Council, Councilor Massey and Emma and I had a meeting again last week. So we've had two meetings with the county. We are scheduled for a third. I just would say generally, it's great to be back at the table with them. There are a lot of issues to still be worked out, but at least we seem to be having a dialogue. And moving forward, Councilor Massey mentioned that the DAC was talking about a bond or a levy. Actually, at the DAC meeting, they put it as raising the tax rate, which is an entirely different, you know, process than a bond or a levy. So I don't know. I think the writing on the wall is that they recognize they cannot keep going at the tax rate they're at. They do need supplemental income. What form that will take, I think, is, remains to be seen, and we haven't heard anything really about that in our meeting either. But we are sort of adhering to the path of, you know, trying to get Milwaukee Bay Park built and really focusing on that. To that end, we did put in a request, sort of, you know, earlier this year, we talked about, before we, before some of us went to the legislature, at the end of January, we talked about making an ask for Milwaukee Bay Park. And we had an opening recently to sort of resubmit an ask for Milwaukee Bay Park. So we are asking the legislature for some money to help fill the gap on Milwaukee Bay Park. And we'll keep everybody apprised if that seems to have any traction.
Yeah, may I just add to that is that we felt like we had the green light based upon the previous approval for, to go in, and so rather than trying to round up everybody and try to do something real quick, we thought we had the green light to adjust the number on the ask.
Actually, we didn't. We didn't adjust.
Oh, that's right, it was already.
Is, is the ask like Christmas tree ask?
Yeah.
Is that, and is it in competition with anything else that we would be supportive of?
Well, I mean, we're not, it's our only ask.
It was a, yeah, it was a capital project ask via Rep Gamba's office through the Ways and Means Committee, and because we had provided our one-pager back at City Day with this as the primary ask, they reached out and said, we recall something about a park. What was that thing about a park? Okay, that's great.
Yeah. So stay tuned. We'll see, we'll see where it goes. Looks like Emma wants to...
If you're done, Mayor, I've got just a couple of things. Sticking on parks, I know I'm coming back around to Fernburg, but Greg did reach out today and said he was waiting for City Council to say something tonight. So again, I don't, I, I kind of leave it to you if you want to do something kind of formal to give the green light, or if you just want to verbally acknowledge that you are supportive or not opposed to a shelter, but I think they are looking for something from you all before proceeding with some fundraising efforts for that project.
Yeah, and real quick, just because I did talk to Greg a couple of days ago about it. It's, it's nothing more to, they just want the okay or the support so that when they go and approach NCPRD, they'll, they'll be more likely to support it, too, when they see that the council supported. I don't think it's anything more than that from what I talked to him. It's just a simple ask. I don't think it's anything that we need to make a process out of, frankly.
I mean, I told him I don't think he's going to get any funding out of NCPRD. I mean, they are, you know, it's, they are pretty stretched. I don't know if he's just wanting, you know, them process-wise to be supportive of it or not to say, oh, it's something that's not there, so we don't have to maintain it, or I don't know if he's interested in it from the maintenance aspect as opposed to the fundraising aspect, but, I mean, if he wants a letter that says, we support you, go forth and raise money to, you know, we think it's a fine idea, we have no objection, I don't see downside to that. I guess I'm just worried about a letter that somehow comes back to us as somehow being read as a commitment to fund it or find funding for it.
I think we can make that pretty clear, say that we support the NDA's objective of installing a covered area, and we just leave it pretty simple, cut and dry. Don't talk about any funding or say we support their idea or what they're, what the NDA's looking to do.
Would you draft us one for two weeks, two weeks from today? Okay.
Wonderful.
Great. Could I make a suggestion? Adam, so I think it's, I think it'll be important for us to say that conceptually, this is something that we won't oppose, but that there's a process for installing covered, you know, structures. And within that, within that process, if a decision comes to the City Council, that this is not, this is not forecasting the council's opinion about a future decision. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I don't, I would defer to Justin on that specific language, but we can't actually say in a letter how we're going to vote on something or how we would approve something or how a future council would act. It's just, that puts us in legal...
Frankly, I don't really know what the process they're going to have to go through. Presumably, they'd be through the parks, but if it's a built structure, it will need to be, potentially go through planning, so there might be planning commission. Like, I don't know the gravity of what the request actually is or what the structure is that they want to build, so...
They've already met with Laura and with Adam, and as I understand it, Laura says our old master plan called for picnic area, and so she doesn't see there as being a planning issue.
Might not be.
But I guess we ought to have a letter, you know, sort of protect us in case that ends up being revisited.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I'm not privy to that conversation that he may have had with the planning manager, so it depends on what the, what the proposal is and what it entails, but it'll need to be inspected and all that stuff. So I would probably encourage any letter to have a qualifier or a disclaimer that while we support the idea and concept, any decision or that comes before the planning commission or the planning, or the City Council will be based on what's presented to the council and...
At that time.
At that time.
And we need to, and we need to reference ourselves as the current council.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think it's fine to say, we support junior efforts to fundraise for this project and have that separate from the project itself. Like, I totally support NDAs going out and fundraising for improvements in their parks. I think that's a great use of time and community resources. If there's a process that comes in afterwards or some planning improvement, I think that works, too. But making sure that we show that we're supportive of our NDAs and this venture, I think, is a good...
I didn't mean to at all discourage you from supporting Mr. Hemmer's idea, and I think it's wonderful. I just, I think you need to protect yourself from any, the unknowns that we don't know.
So would you be, have time to do a letter and have enough, a few days to vet it with Justin and Laura?
I anticipate it being a pretty short one.
Yeah.
So I'll write something pretty quick and then just send it over to Justin.
Okay, great.
And I'll get that done by the end of the week.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Anything else? Okay. Nobody pulled any April Fool's pranks today. Okay. If my car's missing, I guess I'll know. All right, I will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Aye, second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Well, unfortunately, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.